So, Robbie, I think you're up first.
Yeah. Whatever you want.
Long hand. The other one's outside.
Sure.
Oh, that one. You gotta watch that one.
All right. Well, Mr. Cheek, first of all, let me say, I appreciate your willingness to serve the citizens of Camden County. And if you're ready to take the oath, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Walter C. Cheek, Jr., do swear
I do swear.
That I will, do swear that I will well and truly discharge
That I will well and truly discharge.
The duties of Commissioner for Camden County.
The duties of Commissioner.
In all matters which require my official service
In all matters which require my official service.
To the best of my knowledge and skill
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And I will so act
And I will so act.
As in my judgment
As in my judgment.
Will be most conducive
Will be most conducive.
To the welfare and best interests, to the welfare and best interest
To the welfare and best interest.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof
I have been a resident thereof.
For the time required
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I'm not the holder of
And I'm not the holder of
Any unaccounted-for public money
Any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And that I am not the holder of
Now, I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States
Under the government of the United States.
In the other state
In the other state.
Or any foreign state
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding
Which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified
And I'm otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia
And the laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the constitutions
And I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I am a citizen of the State of Georgia
I'm a citizen of the State of Georgia.
And being an employee of Camden County
And being an employee of Camden County.
And the recipient of public funds
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered
For services rendered.
As such employee
As such employee.
I hereby do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, you're up, Cody.
Hey, Cody. Do you have anybody you want to bring up? Are you good?
No, come up here, Dan. Oh, and Dr. Gray, please.
Cody, I want to say I appreciate your willingness to serve the citizens of Camden County. If you're ready to administer the oath, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yes, sir.
I, Cody Smith, do swear
I, Cody Smith, do swear
That I will well and truly discharge
That I will well and truly discharge.
The duties of Commissioner for Camden County
The duties of Commissioner for Camden County.
In all matters which require my official action
In all matters that require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And I will so act
And I will so act.
As in my judgment
As in my judgment.
Will be most conducive
Will be most conducive.
To the welfare and the best interests
To the welfare and best interests.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof
I have been a resident thereof.
For the time required
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I'm not the holder of
That I'm not the holder of.
Any unaccounted-for public money
Any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof
Or authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of
And that I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States
Under the government of the United States.
In the other state
In the other state.
Any foreign state
Any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding
Which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified
And that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the State of Georgia
And the laws of the State of Georgia.
And that I will support the constitutions
And that I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And I do further solemnly swear
And I do further solemnly swear
That I am a citizen of the State of Georgia
That I am a citizen of the State of Georgia.
And being an employee of Camden County
And being an employee of Camden County.
And the recipient of public funds
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered
For services rendered.
As such employee
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Chairman, did you want to bring anybody up? Are we good? We good?
We're good.
All right. I appreciate your continued service to the citizens of Camden County. If you're ready to assume the role of this position, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ben L. Casey, do swear
I, Ben L. Casey, do swear
That I will, that I will well and truly discharge
That I will well and truly discharge.
The duties for, of Commissioner for Camden County
The duties of Commissioner for Camden County.
In all matters which require my official action
In all matters that require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And that I will so act
And that I will so act.
As in my judgment
As in my judgment.
Will be most conducive
That will be most conducive.
To the welfare and best interests of the entire county.
To the welfare and best interests of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof
I've been a resident thereof.
For the time required
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I'm not the holder of
That I'm not the holder of
Any, any unaccounted-for public money
Any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof
Or authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of
And I'm not the holder of
Any office of trust
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States
Under the government of the United States.
In the other state
In the other state.
Or any foreign state
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding
From which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the State of Georgia
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified
And that I am otherwise qualified
To hold said office
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution
According
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia
And the laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the constitutions of the United States
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I am a citizen of the State of Georgia
That I'm a citizen of the State of Georgia.
And being an employee of Camden County
And being an employee of Camden County.
And the recipient of public funds
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered
For services rendered.
As such employee
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, we will pass the gavel to the county attorney for the reorganization of the board.
I call this meeting to order, and at this time, I'm opening the floor for nominations for the position of Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I'd like to nominate Jim Goodman for Commissioner, or for Chairman, sorry.
A call for a second?
Second.
Is there a vote for this? All who say aye?
Aye.
All who say nay?
Nay.
Are there any other nominations for Chairman?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Cody Smith, Chair for Chairman of the Commission.
Any seconds?
I'll second that.
All who say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All who say nay?
Nay.
Call for any other nominations for
Nominate Ben Casey for Chairman.
That's a second by Commissioner Walker. I'm sorry, Chairman Walker. Thank you. Cheek, I apologize. Okay. All who say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all who say nay?
Nay.
On a vote of three to two, the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners is now Commissioner Casey. Congratulations, sir.
All right, I'd like to nominate Robbie Cheek for Vice Chair.
I second.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. All right. I'll move on to the adoption of the special call agenda. Are there any amendments to that?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Motion carries. This brings us to our first public comment section of this. We've only got a little bit of time, so we're limited to three minutes and agenda items only. Anybody registered, Katie? Anybody wish to speak before the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. This is to reappoint and affirm the existing contract with the county administrator. Can I get a motion on this item?
I make a motion to reaffirm the contract.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item number two, to reappoint and reaffirm the existing employment contract with the county attorney. Still moved? We got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. This brings us to the appointment of Camden County Public Service Authority. I'll make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Turner to this position.
I second that.
Got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn in the barrel. All right, this brings us to the final public comment sections of the special call meeting. Anybody registered, Katie? Anybody from the public wish to speak? All right, seeing none, can we get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn, adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
First and a second. All in favor? And we'll be back at six o'clock. Thank you.
We'll have the invocation by Commissioner Goodman and join us for the pledge.
Let us stand, please. Gentlemen, remove your covers and caps. Let us pray. Our Father and I, God in heaven, we come to thee in prayer in this dawning of a new year with the new spirit here on this dais. Bless each of us as we make decisions in the best interests of our citizens. Give us wisdom, give us grace, give us the ability to see the bigger picture. Father, we ask you to forgive us of our many sins. Father, we pray your blessings on those who are not well. Father, we pray for our nation. And we pray for those in uniform who stand in the breach, who guard us and to protect us. We pray for our local law enforcement. Father, we ask all of these things in thy most precious and holy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, we're going to ask for a moment of silence for to remember President Carter. Thank you. All right, roll call, Katie.
All commissioners are present.
Okay, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Here none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
The first, the second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? The agenda is adopted. Okay, if there's no changes to the minutes from the December 17th special called meeting, can I get a motion to accept those meetings? The new commissioners can vote on this if they so choose, or you can abstain. Do we have a first on this, a motion on this?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, this brings us to our first presentation. I think Mike, you're doing this?
Yes, sir. Congratulations on your reappointment as Chair of the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cheek, congratulations. Look forward to working with all of you. My name is Mike Spears. I'm the Director of Human Resources for Camden County, and it's my honor to be here tonight. I'd like to call up to the front Mr. Marcello Reed. Have you come up? There's a X very faintly on the carpet right there. I'm thrilled this evening, you guys. You can face this way. You know what, I'm really thrilled to be able to read this proclamation recognizing a young man for his dedication to service. And I'm honored to welcome him into a fraternity that I was very fortunate to become a part of, my goodness, some 30 years ago when I stood where he's standing. Mr. Reed, we have him come up front and center so we can recognize him on his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Mr. Reed actually had his honor ceremony in December, so we're catching up on this here. But I have this proclamation I'd like to read, and then after that, we're going to ask your family to come up. Mr. Reed's mother is Ms. Deborah Walker Reed, the clerk of the City of St. Mary's, so we're excited to have her here as well. All right, so here we go. Whereas the Camden County Board of Commissioners takes great pride in recognizing the outstanding achievements of its young citizens who demonstrate exemplary dedication, leadership, and service to community. And whereas Marcello Reed, a 2024 graduate of Camden County High School and a member of Boy Scout Troop 208 in Kingsland, has attained the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest honor in scouting in America, reflecting years of commitment, perseverance, and dedication. Whereas Marcello's Eagle Scout project, titled "The Howard Gilman Memorial Park Gazebo Accessibility Ramp Repair," that's a mouthful, demonstrates his commitment to enhancing the community by ensuring accessibility to all visitors to this cherished public space, reflecting his resourcefulness and his concern for others. Whereas the Eagle Scout rank is achieved by only a select few who complete rigorous requirements, including merit badges, demonstrating leadership, and providing meaningful service to their communities. And whereas Marcello Reed was celebrated at his Eagle Scout Court of Honor Ceremony on Saturday, December 21st, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. at the Holy Trinity Lutheran Church, where his family, friends, and fellow scouts gathered to honor this significant milestone. So now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the Camden County Board of Commissioners that Marcello Reed is hereby recognized and commended for his extraordinary accomplishment of achieving the rank of Eagle Scout for his outstanding service to Camden County and for setting a high standard of leadership and integrity for others to follow. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation shall be entered into the official minutes of the Camden County Board of Commissioners and kept forever. And a copy presented to Marcello Reed, and he already has the copy as a token of the board's appreciation and admiration for his achievements, proclaimed this 17th day of December 2024, Ben L. Casey, Chairman, Camden County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to ask the commissioners to come down and get a picture with Marcello as well.
All right, our next presentation is our audited financials. Mr. Trey Scott.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, my name's Trey Scott. I was the partner who oversaw the audit of the county's 2024 financial statements. And pleased to be here with you all this evening to discuss the results of that audit. Just kind of give you an idea of why I'm here. Give you a quick introduction to Malden and Jenkins, in case you're unfamiliar with us. Go over our auditors' report, compliance reports, and your financial statements. Then I've got some required communications, and then a few other little things. And then certainly we'll answer any questions that you all may have. Maybe. There we go. Really quickly about Malden and Jenkins. We were founded over 100 years ago. We serve over 725 governmental entities throughout the southeast. Do that across 14 offices in six states. And the office that serves you all is our Savannah, Georgia office. But enough about us, I think, of particular importance to you all is our audit opinion. I think, as you all know, that big, thick document that's sitting in front of you, that your act for is the responsibility of the county's management. It's our responsibility as your auditor to express opinions on that financial information based on our audit. We do that by following generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. And I'm pleased to report to you all this evening that we were able to issue the county a clean, or what we call an unmodified, opinion. What that basically means is that your financial statements present fairly the financial position and the results of the county's operations as of June 30, 2024. And that's what you're looking for, a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can provide to you as your auditor. Also, in case you're unaware, you all present an act for an annual comprehensive financial report, and that goes above and beyond the minimum required reporting of a local government. You present a couple of additional sections in your financial statements, an introductory section, and then 10 years of statistical information as well. So that act for is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association each year in their Certificate of Achievement program. And 2024, as you can see, there will be the 24th year the county has received that sought-after certificate. So that's certainly something I think that the Finance Department works really hard with. Certainly something I think you all, as governance, should be very proud of. That's not a simple feat, for sure. Also included in your financial statements are a couple of compliance reports. The first is what we call our Yellow Book Report. If we had any significant issues to discuss with you, like findings or those kinds of things, those would be reported in our Yellow Book Report. But I'm pleased to report, we had no such findings this year. I think that's just a testament to the hard work of management, the Finance Department. We work primarily with Nancy and her team. You know, the hard work they do on a daily basis, and certainly something I think they should be commended for. And I think, again, something you all should be very proud of. Anytime you spend more than $750,000 in federal grant monies, you're required to have what's called a single audit of your major grant programs. You all did spend more than that this year. We did have a single audit. We had no findings related to the spending of your grant monies. And we issued you an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, on compliance with your major grant program. So that's definitely a good thing as well. Moving on to the numbers themselves, I tried to kind of pull out just some highlights here for you so you don't have to thumb through that big, huge document, but you're more than welcome to if you want something to kind of help you close your eyes later on this evening. But you all, like most local governments, present two sets of financial statements. A government-wide set of financial statements, which you only see once a year in your act for, and fund-level financial information, which I think you're more apt to see during the budget process, or, you know, quarterly or monthly-type financial information. But what you're looking at here on this slide are your government-wide numbers. So all of your funds rolled up into one column, kind of giving you that big-picture view of the county as of June 30, 2024. And again, just a bunch of numbers on a page, but I'll draw your attention to the bottom two bullet points. Your net position, or your equity, so that's the difference between your assets and your liabilities, was about $141 million. Again, that's across all of your funds. And you increased that net position, which is what we like to see, by about $2.8 million. So your revenue exceeded your expenses, again, across all of your funds at that government-wide level by about $2.8 million. And I'm more of a graph-picture kind of guy than words. So this is a really telling graph. I mean, it shows the growth of the county over the course of the last five years. It shows very good trends as well. Your revenues are trending up, just like your expenditures and expenses are trending up. And the same thing goes for net position. So that's a good, healthy-looking, government-wide comparison over the course of the last five years. A common question I get is how healthy are we as a government? And an audit's not designed to tell you how healthy you are, but there are certain metrics that you can look at to kind of gauge that health. And one is, are we continuing to reinvest in the county? Or are we allowing our asset base to kind of age? And you can see that blue column there continues to grow. That's what we want to see. You know, and with that growth, your accumulated appreciation's going to grow as well, and that's what that green bar is. So again, no real concerns here. You are continuing to reinvest. Now, if we saw that blue line being pretty flat, and the green bar continuing to grow, we might have a little bit different conversation. But again, no real concerns as it relates to your reinvestment there. Moving on from your government-wide statements to your fund-level information, more specifically, your general fund. It's typically the kind of the big sibling fund of the government. Just point out a couple of numbers there. Fund balance, so again, the difference between your assets and your liabilities, not your cash, was about $17.5 million. You increased your fund balance this year by about $400,000. That's that third to the bottom bullet point. And then we were talking about health a little while ago. Good couple of places to look for health in your general fund are how many months of expenditures do you have in fund balance that you're in? GFOA recommends about three to six months. You all have about five, so that's a good place to be. And then liquidity. How many times could you pay your current liabilities? The invoices that were unpaid at June 30th? Your payroll that's about to come due? You all could have done that about five times with the current liquid assets that you had available to you at June 30th. So that's a good liquidity ratio as well, good indicator of health in the general fund. And then, again, it's kind of like your government-wide statements. It's a good-looking graph as well, good-looking trends, especially with fund balance. You know, your general fund fund balance was just a little bit under $5 million in 2020, which that was COVID year. And we're up to, you know, just a shade above $15 million. So it was about $17.5 million in 2024. So good-looking trends with the general fund as well. And then also took a look at your major, your biggest enterprise fund, your business-type fund, your solid waste fund. Good-looking net position there, $24.7 million, increased it by about $1.5 million. We also reinvested in the system by about $900,000 worth of capital asset additions and paid down about $400,000 in our lease debt as well. And then there's your solid waste, kind of taking a look at it graphically. We did dip a little bit, '22 and '23, but certainly rebounded fairly well in 2024. So again, no real concerns as it relates to those numbers. And then just some required communications. Government auditing standards require me to communicate a few things to you, your financial statement disclosures, your accounting estimates, your accounting policies, all of those things are integral parts of your financial statements that are the responsibility of the county's management. We had no difficulties in dealing with management, we had no disagreements with management in the performance of our audit. The Finance Department, very professional people, get us what we need, when we need it, and that's certainly very refreshing from our standpoint as your auditor. No uncorrected misstatements, so we had no past audit adjustments, everything was posted to the accounts of the county. And then finally, just want to make sure you all are aware that we're independent of the county in accordance with all of the applicable standards of our profession. Few new GASB standards, I'm sure you all want me to talk for 30 minutes about those, but I won't bore you. We do have a couple that are going to be effective next year, and we'll work with Finance Department on the best course of action for implementation of those, but shouldn't have any real significant impact on your act for. And that pretty much concludes what I had to report to you all this evening. It's always been a pleasure to serve the county, and we look forward to serving you all in the future, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I have one. So our liquid ratio, you're saying, for example, if we needed money to pay two or three months' worth of payroll, we should have that stashed away somewhere.
You are around five, five times of your current liabilities.
That was on June 30th.
But that is as of June 30th.
Okay.
And that's a number that typically, with a property tax-driven government, declines as you get closer to that next property tax cycle.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Sir.
Hold on.
So in essence, I mean, we, we got this, we got a chart. In essence, the property taxes before they come in, then that fund balance is going to be lower, am I correct?
Typically, it declines.
Is that nation, I mean, statewide, that happens everywhere?
Any property tax-driven, you know, if that's your primary source of revenue.
So if we sent our property taxes out late, then we would have some issues, probably, right?
You're going to see a decline in revenue probably next year if you had, if those did go out late. But then, then again, probably not, because as long as the collections come in by June 30th, everything should probably be pretty comparable.
We need to clear something up there. The Board of Commissioners does not send out the tax bills.
Absolutely.
That's the job of the tax commissioner.
But it does affect our fund balance, that's what I was trying to...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's really the point I was trying to make.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. All right, this brings us to our first public comment section of the night. It'll be agenda items only, and we'll limit it to three minutes each. Anybody restor?
Yes, sir. Mr. David Smith?
Hello, I'm David Smith, St. Mary's, Georgia. First off, I'd like to congratulate everyone here on the 2025 Board of Commissioners. I'd like to talk about the Tax Anticipation Note, TAN. I had no idea what it was, but once I looked into it, I pretty much figured out that it is a payday loan. Now, when I, I worked with younger people, and they didn't handle their finances right, they had to go for payday loans. You know what that does? That puts you behind. It also, you're paying interest on that loan, which is dead money. And I, I at first thought that I'd heard this was $2 million, then I found out it was a $5 million loan. What's the interest on that? Just imagine, that is taxpayer money going to interest, which is dead money. Now, what that, that points out is, the 2024 Board of Commissioners, led by the current chairman, didn't manage funds right. Now, you could say that the tax bills didn't go out on time, but don't you work with tax commissioners? They're in the same building. Didn't anybody communicate that? In June, according to our last speaker, we were doing real good. So in six months, sounds like there was no proper planning, no proper budgeting, no pulling in the belt. You know, I spent a little more than I wanted to coming up to Christmas. You know what I said? Well, we're gonna have to cut a little here, we're gonna have to cut a little there. Does this board do that? We got a new board, Board of 2025, some same members, we got a couple new members. I hope that each of the members, especially the new members, have the moral courage and the fortitude to vote independently, and not just vote in a block, because that's what they've been pulled in to do. You're handling our, our money. If I make a mistake, I only mess it up myself. If you make a mistake, you're wasting all of our money. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak for the board? All right, I will say that the, the tax commissioner is a constitutional officer. We have no control over the tax commissioner. The assessor board and the tax commissioner board work together on, on, on the tax bills. The tax, the assessor's office submitted the budget on September 12th. It was then in the hands of the tax commissioner to get the bills out, and the tax commissioner didn't get the bills out until the end of December. We have no control over when the tax commissioner sends those bills out, none. All right, we'll move on. All right, this time we need to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
Make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
Second.
All right, you got a first and second, all in favor? All right, Joey.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we have a request to rezone 1.05 acres from agricultural residential to agricultural forestry. This property is located in District 1 at 509 Maryfield Plantation Road. The highlighted in blue is the parent parcel, which is six acres. Highlighted in red is the acre, 1.05 acres, that they would like to recombine with the parent parcel. The slide here shows, highlighted in blue, is the zoning of that parcel, which is agricultural forestry, and behind it, directly behind that parcel, you can see the acre is currently zoned AR. This is the submitted recombination plat, which will put these two parcels back together, the acre with the six acres. As stated, the applicant has submitted a recombination plat to add an additional 1.5, 0.5 acres into the six-acre parcel currently zoned AF. Planning Commission does recommend approval of this request.
All right, does anybody from the public which is speaking favor the item? Anybody which is speaking opposition? Anybody from the board got any questions? All right, hear and none. All right, now we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene a regular meeting.
I move to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
No second.
You got a first and second, all in favor? All right, we're back in the regular meeting. Okay, Joey.
Thank you, Chairman. A request to rezone 1.05 acres from agricultural residential to agricultural forestry. This parcel is located in District 1 at 509 Maryfield Plantation Road. Planning Commission recommends to approve.
All right, can I get a motion on the side?
I move to approve the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Commissioners. I come before you requesting approval for the memorandum of agreement of mutual aid between the commanding officer of Navy Submarine Kings Bay and Camden County Fire Rescue. We currently have a mutual aid agreement with the base now, you know, normally renew it, I think it's every three years, I believe. The City of Kingsland also approved it two weeks ago for the Kingsland Fire Rescue. We have a good working relationship with the Navy firefighters out there at Kings Bay Navy Submarine Base, so...
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve this item.
I'll second.
Got a first and second to approve the mutual aid agreement? Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Julie.
Good evening. I'm requesting that the board approve a $30,000 grant from the ASPCA through the National Shelter Initiative Grant. These funds will be used to purchase equipment and supplies for the Animal Control Department, including kennels, building a play area, supplies for adoption events, grooming and food. No match is required. At this time, I would like approval to accept award as presented.
I move to accept the grant from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals.
Let me make a, ask for a motion first.
Oh, okay.
But we got a first, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries.
I am also requesting that the board approve a $200,000 recreational trails program grant from Georgia Department of Natural Resources. These grant funds will be used to rehabilitate the Boardwalk Trail at Browntown Wilderness Park, install new decking and amenities, and to install a new natural trail to provide connectivity. Currently, the trail is closed to the public, and these funds would allow us to make the necessary improvements to open the trail again. A 20% match is required, but the county has agreed to overmatch the project by providing $86,000 to ensure the project's completion. Please keep in mind that after the project is competitively bid, that the budget could increase. At this time, I would like approval to accept the award as presented.
I'll make a motion, we approve this item for the trail.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a cap on the increase that we would find acceptable?
There could be, but...
Commissioner, we would have to bring that back before the board, we'll have to put it out for bid for the project. This is just the allocation that we initially put in over a year ago when we applied for the grant. If we, you know, if any amount above that $86,000, we would definitely come before the board, and it is my estimate that it will be above that just due to the inflationary cost and everything right now.
Yeah, we'll see what the bids show, Mr. Good.
Acceptable.
Thank you.
All right, you got a first and second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay. I'm requesting approval to award the PSA generator to Charlton Electric. The generator will be purchased with GMA Hazard Minigation Grant Funds, and the match and cost overage will come from the grant's management budget. Purchasing, purchasing department, or person, sorry, issued an invitation to bid and received one bid from Charlton Electric. They were awarded the bid as they were the only company that performed a site visit. At this time, I would like approval to accept the bid award as presented.
All right, can I get a motion on the side?
I'll move to approve that, Chairman.
All right, I'll second it. Any discussion? We'll say we're doing this because the county uses the PSA rec facility as a emergency shelter at times. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Do you want to do a photo?
Sure. Big check.
My first big check. Big check.
Good evening, Commissioners, congratulations. My name's Jared Bedoin, I'm the Public Works Director for Camden County. In front of you, I have two items. First is this middle of the ALMIG, or the Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, application and roads to be submitted to Georgia Department of Transportation for approval. We do this every year to ask for our, our share of the ALMIG funds. This year, we're approved for $479,397.76, not a penny less. We do have a match of 30%, which is $143,819.33, and then we'll be contributing another $256,782.91 from SPOLOST. We're looking for the approval of the recommended road list for the resurfacing of the GDOT for fiscal year 2025 ALMIG application. The roads are selected annually, and we use our pavement assessment that was completed on all county paved roads back in September 2023, and we received the results a year ago. And so it's in front of you for approval, and I'm here for any questions.
All right, can I get a motion on the side?
I'd move to approve that.
I'll second.
All right, we got a first and second to approve the Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. Any discussion?
Just some clarification, this is something we get every year, correct? Or go after every year?
Yes. Now, we don't always do it every year, sometimes we bank it, and so we can add more road mileage to get a better deal. All right, we got a first and second, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries.
Second in front of you is approval for an IGA intergovernmental agreement between the City of Kingsland and Camden County for right-of-way acquisition. The City of Kingsland has undertaken with Georgia Department of Transportation the Boone Street Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements Project. As part of this project, right-of-way acquisition is needed, and the county is the local administering projects certified entity that's required to work in between GDOT and the acquisition of this, of these right-oys. So the board is approving a contract, or they already approved a contract for the acquisition of right-of-way state aid and federal aid, project reimbursement for this project. We're just looking to have this IGA in, in, to allow the, the two entities to know exactly what their roles are and their responsibilities at the end of the day. So the agreement is needed between City and Kingsland and County, Camden County Board of Commissioners to address the roles and responsibilities of each party, and to authorize the county to make payments to the City of Kingsland, their consultant JMT, and the property owners as right-of-way property is acquired, and then we will submit to GDOT for reimbursement.
Can I get a motion on the side?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, it does not cost a county any money, we're just, we're the, we're the pass-through agent for the money.
Correct.
It's a flow-through, right?
What's the rate of reimbursement? Is it like six months, three months?
No, actually, we've worked with GDOT, and it's, as soon as we give disbursement to a right-of-way owner to acquire that right-of-way, it'll be in the City of Kingsland's name, and then we can submit it right away.
Thanks.
And I will say that the sidewalks along Boone Street is something that is desperately needed. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Clark Gonzalez, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and this agenda item is ratification of the issuance of the $5 million tax anticipation note that was approved by the board on December 17th. And I'm just going to review a little bit that I talked about in December, just to go over that. Just a tax anticipation note is a short-term loan to a local government to provide cash when not immediately available, and the debt is repaid with future tax revenues, such as property tax or sales tax. TANS are used, TAN is the tax anticipation note, are used to bridge the... used, TAN is the tax anticipation note, are used to bridge the gap between when taxes are collected and when expenditures are incurred. So historically, tax bills are issued by the tax commissioners no later than really October. I think there was one time, it was early November, with a due date of 60 days after issuance. And the tax commissioner mailed the tax bills on December 17th with a due date of February 16th. So I do have a graph that if, that could just be put up. Nope, there it is. So this graph illustrates the annual fluctuations in our cash reserves leading up to the receipts of the annual tax distribution over the past four years. So you could see that just as taxes are due, it really goes up, and there's times that our cash reserves are over 20 million. I think at one point, maybe 23 million, and then just expenditures always continue, so it just drops down, and it's just a continuous fluctuation. So as of January 2nd of this year, before receiving the tax anticipation note, which did post that day, but I pulled the numbers before we got that, our cash reserves had reached a low of $1,158,000. Yesterday afternoon, the tax commissioner remitted to us 1.8 million in taxes. However, this influx was partially offset by a payroll distribution this week totaling about 1.1 million, where 900,000 of that was drawn from the general fund. And additionally, accounts payable, I pulled that before coming in here, our accounts payable this week for the general fund is about $250,000. So if you do the math on that, without the taxes coming in from the tax commissioner and without the TAN coming in, we would have been left with $8,613. And that is just a, it's not a mismanagement of the funds by any manner. It is just a normal fluctuation as tax revenue comes in and expenditures go out. And as Mr. Scott had explained to everyone, that our fund balance as of June 30th would last us about five months, and now we're into about six and a half months. So it would just be a natural course that we would be running out of cash. So this is just a temporary loan, and my anticipating paying it off no later than March 31st. And if the revenue comes in a lot quicker from the tax commissioner's office, we will certainly get that paid as soon as possible in order to not incur additional interest expense. And in the meantime, I did receive the full lump sum amount, and after you, or if you do ratify this tonight, I'm moving that over to the LGIP, which is our Georgia Fund One account. And I checked the interest on that for December. It had gone from November's of 4.69% to about 4.5% interest, so that's offsetting the expense anyway. But as, of course, you're drawing down on that and you're spending it, it's not like we earn interest on that whole lump sum, that whole period. But we are offsetting those expenses as best we can with our investments. So I am requesting approval or ratification of that TAN.
And that interest rate is higher than the rate.
Yes, the rate on the TAN is 3.55%, and the interest we're earning about 4.5% currently.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
All right, can I get a motion on this item? I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion?
I have moreover a question for Nancy. Is that allowed?
Sure.
Ms. Nancy, do we know if the tax commissioners, I know it's separate, they're a constitutional office. Are they taking measures or working with their third-party contractor vendor to ensure this doesn't happen again?
Yes, it's my understanding that the tax commissioner and the tax assessor's office are working together so that we could, they could produce the bills a lot sooner next year, so that we don't run into the same problem. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, who's handling the next item, Sean?
I'll handle it, Chairman. So the next couple of items are for SPOLOST 9. About just before midway through 2024, the county and the municipalities and PSA began holding regular meetings to discuss not only SPOLOST 8, but even the creation of the project list for SPOLOST 9. So through all of that, what was created, and I'm sorry if that's hard to see, maybe Scott, if you can kind of, or Jacob, if you can try to zoom in on that as much as you can. But through the planning for SPOLOST 9, this is kind of the summary, if you will, of what came out of SPOLOST 9 planning. So the SPOLOST 8 collections, the referendum itself was 65 million. We're anticipated to collect, excuse me, I think the referendum was 55 million. We're expected to collect about 68 million. For SPOLOST 9, the cities and the county and the PSA agreed that SPOLOST revenue or estimated collections should be at 85 million. And the Level 1 and Level 2 projects that you see there, the Public Safety Complex, that is the jail, and then the corresponding Level 2s, you got local park rehabilitations, those are all for local parks that really serve true recreational services, football, T-ball, softball, those kinds of things. You've got the Georgia Florida Sports Tourism Park, ambulances, a total of seven, and a JDA industrial entrance road. Those totals total up to 37 million. And then you'll see the split between the local governments there at the bottom. You'll see the PSA per capita split for each local government, as well as the difference in what each local government is anticipated to receive in the event that each, you know, the SPOLOST 9 would actually collect 85 million. That's kind of an if. So that's the summary. Now, the one kind of piece that I think the audience, as well as the board, needs to be reminded of, whenever we go into planning on this jail, I know we talk about interest with the TAN. You know, it's unfortunate that the tax bills went out late, but I will say that when we talk about interest, the interest for that jail, if and when we do that bond, depending upon what style of project we end up going with in construction, that project could be anywhere from 40 to 50 million. The interest on a 20-year bond on that size of a project is going to be well over $10 million. I mean, you're potentially looking at an annual service debt of anywhere from 2.5 to 3.5 million. And right now, one mill of tax for us is running about 2.2 million. So you can kind of do the math there. And that would be for 20 years, you know, if we did a 20-year bond. If you did a 30-year bond, that interest payments could be as high as 15 million or more. So, you know, I just kind of want the community to be understanding that, you know, SPOLOST is, you know, one of the ways in which we can fund the jail, but, you know, the only other way is really through property taxes to be able to pay that bond off. So this is the project list, as was agreed to. This is what's within the IGA. All the cities have approved the IGA. The PSA has to ratify it. There's a section in there where the City of St. Mary's and City of Kingsland attorneys, it's the same attorney, but wanted to make a modification to the excess fund portion, as well as in the event that any entity were to sell real property. And basically, what that language does is just follow the state guidelines, but also in the event that there are any excess proceeds after all the projects have been completed, those excess proceeds will then be distributed to the cities and the county based on the per capita rate off of the 2020 census. So with that, I will take any questions that you all have.
Can we get a motion on this item first?
I move that we not sign the IGA agreement.
Got a first and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, one of my concerns is that we have 10 million allocated for the Public Safety Complex, and we know we're going to need much more than that to actually accomplish, you know, breaking ground on a public safety complex. So my concern is about some of these other projects that we have on here as well, are they necessary, especially with the dire funding needs that we have here on the county?
I can't answer that. That was a discussion between all the elected officials between the cities and the county and the PSA.
Would it not be more incumbent of us to renegotiate this now that we have new commissioners, a new mayor, new council people all throughout the county?
Which one did you have a question about?
Well, so on this particular list, the Georgia Florida Sports Tourism Park, will that be open to the public?
Well, that's a JDA project. From my understanding, it will be open to the public like Monday through Thursday, and the weekend it'll be reserved for, for basically travel teams. It's an economic development tool.
Okay, and where will this be situated at?
Behind Cracker Barrel in Kingsland.
In that large private development that's being built? Is the JDA building this?
No, it's private.
Well, the JDA will end up owning the fields.
And they're going to generate the revenue when that's being reserved privately?
There's already a tad on that property. So that $10 million, and we have to work out all the details, is for infrastructure, which would be the sewer, the water. They're going to, they got a new road that they've got to put in there, so there's some things like that. I mean, it won't be to erect a building, as far as I know.
Well, one more question I have is that $10 million, it was my understanding that the developer of that project was willing to build it whether this money was available or not.
And still is.
Okay, so is this something we want to approve and move forward with, when we know we need more money for our public safety complex, and we have a private individual willing and able to spend their own money to build that park? That's just my concern.
Yeah. My logic behind all of this is basically that over the last 20 years, we've lost four industries. We don't have a lot of industry in Camden County. This is, to me, is an industry. It's not necessarily just somebody coming in and dropping something in on us, but it's an industry, which will generate more taxes and more income for the county. Now, if we don't do the 10 million, then that slows the project down. This project's kind of, I think, been in the works for 10 or 15 years. I personally would hate to see it slow down anymore.
Yes, sir.
One of the, excuse me, one of the things I will mention, so there is a paragraph within the IGA that's under the Level 1 and Level 2 categories that does stipulate that in the event that no funds are expended on that Georgia Florida Sports Tourism Park, that those funds would then be appropriated to the jail, to the Public Safety Complex. So that is a caveat that's within the IGA, and it will also be on the ballot as well.
Yeah, well, my only other concern as well is I've had a commissioner once before tell me that if I wanted to build something, right, I should take my own money and do it. This looks like an example of taking public funds and giving them to a private developer, and I just didn't think that was something he supported.
Yeah, and it's through the JDA.
Giving it to the JDA.
Yeah, that's a whole different.
Then what is the JDA going to do with that money?
They're going to build that infrastructure.
They're going to build it?
Well, I'm not sure about that. I couldn't tell you. But they're going to finance it. So.
Has a developer already been identified for that project?
Has he what?
Has a developer already been identified for that project?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
All right, you got a first and a second on that? All in favor?
Oh, did I, wait a minute. What was it?
That was to not sign the intergovernmental agreement.
I retract that.
No take backs.
Yeah.
And I also lost it in the discussion.
Yeah, I did too.
You had two people vote for no, or vote in favor of Mr. Smith's motion. Those opposed?
Opposed, I can't vote again. Is that true?
Mr. Smith's motion was to.
Jackie, can you look that up? Give us a minute, please.
So Commissioner Turner has sought to retract his vote. He has to motion to retract his vote, and it would be voted upon by the board. And then we would go back to Commissioner Smith's original motion.
Okay, those in favor of Mr. Turner retracting his vote? Okay, now we're back to the original motion made by Mr. Smith.
Would you restate that, please?
My motion was to not sign the intergovernmental agreement and go back to the drawing board and renegotiate.
All right, all in favor of that motion? Okay, those opposed to that? Okay, I'll make another motion that we approve this item. Do we have a second?
Second. Take it.
This is to approve the intergovernmental agreement. All right, we got a first and a second. All in favor? Those opposed? All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Mr. Chairman, this item, following the IGA, this is where the county Board of Commissioners, you are the sole entity that can call for the referendum itself. So all of the ballot language that you can see within your agenda packet, which basically outlines the projects and the dispersments between the local governments and what projects those funds are supposed to be attributed to, this is the actual call for the Board of Elections and Registration to hold the referendum on March 18th of 2025. They are required to post notice within the legal organ. We're going to actually do that for four weeks. You'll see that ad in the legal organ. You'll also see information through our social media channels, as well as the municipal social media channels. And we'll also be holding town halls and public meeting events to educate the public with that. So with that, this item is to consider the approval of the resolution itself of SPOLOST 9, and then to ask the Board of Elections and Registration to hold a referendum.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve this resolution for the special purpose local option sales tax. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Or you've got something?
I was just going to say I'm against it for the same reason I'm against signing the intergovernmental agreement.
All right, anybody else? All in favor? Those opposed? All right, this brings us to the next item. This is an appointment to the Planning Commission for District 1. Can I get a nomination for this position?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend Randall Morris to be appointed to the Planning Commission for District 1.
I'll second that. Any discussion? This is to appoint Randall Morris to the Planning Commission for District 1. All in favor? Welcome aboard, Rand. All right, this is an appointment to the Board of Elections and Registration for District 1. Can I get a motion or a nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Robin Maynor Knight to hold the seat for the District 1 Board of Elections position.
I'll second that. All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. This brings us to our reports. Callander, Katie?
There's no changes at this time.
The county administrator comments?
Congratulations to our new commissioners. I look forward to working with you, and congratulations, Chairman, on being reappointed as chairman. Vice Chair Cheek, congratulations to you on being nominated and confirmed as our vice chair. Look forward to working with the board. We've got a lot of things coming up this year, a lot of wonderful projects, a lot of great opportunities, so really looking forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to our last public comment section of the night. We're limited to three minutes. Any registered speakers, Katie? Anybody wish to speak for the board? Come on up, sir.
Two topics. First off, on the trails that was brought up, $200,000. I think that's a great idea, but I also think we should possibly look at some other options, and we possibly bring that price tag down. In 1998, In 1998, when I was, uh, on the USS Nebraska, we partnered with the school in Yuli, went there and built a very nice, uh, uh, walking trail with, uh, exercise points and such. And, um, I'm sure if we reached out to some of the commands on the base, you might be able to save some money there. Not only that, but possibly other projects that we come across. Uh, the other thing I'd like to bring up is I got Gulf War illness, and my memory's not what it used to be, but I kind of remember us voting on four, or y'all voting on $4 million to go to a sports complex at the par three. Now we're spending $10 million for another sports complex? Do we really need two sports complexes? Can we really afford $14 million? Didn't we just take a $5 million loan? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Congratulations to the new commissioners, and congratulations again to you, Mr. Chairman. I want to speak, oh, sorry, with regards to the SPOS and the IGA. First of all, I'm rather curious, the agenda that was sent out prior to this meeting, the IGA that was included in that agenda doesn't appear to match the ones which have been signed by at least my municipality, of which I reside in, that's St. Mary's. So once again, I'm curious as to what exactly it is that you guys are voting on to approve, because it doesn't seem to be in alignment. Perhaps we can once again, you guys can vote on it and approve it once that's corrected. With regards to the $10 million that's been allocated for the public safety complex, you know, Mr. Boe, right, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to say that the only funds that are going to be available are either from the SPOS or through taxes, because we've not had any conversation with regards to CJCC funds, the BGA funds, with regards to the Edward Byrne funds for correctional facilities for the DOJ and the Justice Department. To say that the only way in which we're going to get a much-needed public safety complex is going to either be through SPOS or through alloc, you know, through increased mileage rate for our property taxes, it's just not, it's just not correct. Finally, with regards, you all want to echo what Commissioner Smith said with regards to the $4.3 million that had been allocated for the sports complex, the soccer complex being enhanced. And with regards to Mr. Turner saying, if somebody wants to open a business, then they should go do a SWOT analysis, get the funds, and open it themselves. I wasn't asking for money to create an enhancement of the park, our resource that already existed. I just wanted the opportunity to get it back to an operating status. But we are now being asked as a community to give $10 million for someone else to have a business. And then finally, I just want to thank whoever is responsible for updating the Camden County website. At 23:04 on 5th of January of 2024, it indicated that we only had an award up until 2018. That has since been corrected, so thank you very much for ever made that correction. Have a great year.
All right, anybody else wish to speak?
Thank you for having me to come up. As you know, I've been up here time and time again, asking about my road. And someone, I don't know who it was, I wasn't even home, but somebody donated me some dirt in the road, and I appreciate it to the highest. I don't know who did it. I don't even know who spread it, but somebody did it for me. But then dirt on dirt is still dirt. I thank you for it, but dirt is still dirt. And I need some gravel, uh, reclaimed rock, uh, something in there solid to help me. Now me and, um, a few of the guys got together, and we gonna try to buy some reclaimed rock or something. But before we get it, we need to know if we can get someone to spread it for us. And on the other hand, we need to know if you all could donate a couple of loads of some kind of rock. In saying that, I see how you're spending thousands and millions, and all I'm asking for is hundreds. You know, just a few hundred. And, 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 uh, you might say I'm, 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 uh, uh, trying to do something overwhelming for myself, but what I am trying, what I'm saying is, I'm the type of guy that don't give up. And, and, and like I told you when I came before, I'm gonna keep coming. You might get aggravated with me, but, uh, I'm aggravated with myself, so it don't matter. But, uh, I'm just, I'm not begging, I'm asking. Because if I was begging, I'd get down on my knees, but I'm, I'm not begging, I'm asking. If y'all could donate a couple of loads of reclaimed rock or some kind of rock, anything to help keep that road from bugging. See, the dirt was a help, you know, and it, it hardened it some, but then when it rained, it still gets boggy. Now, I don't know who brought it, uh, like I say, I appreciate it, but I need something else.
Well, the problem is you live on a, it's a five road.
I know that, I, I understand all that. I understand all that, Reverend Chairman, Mr. Chairman. But we are still human beings.
Yes, sir, I understand.
We are not cattle. We are not snakes crawling on the ground. We are still human beings.
Yes.
And we are tax-paying human beings, regardless to where we live. And I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not coming up here trying to frustrate you and nothing like that. I'm just asking because that, that's what I do.
Well, your time's up. If you get with Seth, he'll, he'll talk to, with you.
Sir, can I get your address, please?
I'd, I'd like to talk to you as well after the meeting.
Okay, that away, thank you.
Well, we got an executive session, so it might be a while, so.
Just hang around if you can.
All right, anybody else wish to speak for the board? All right, nobody else wish to speak? All right. Now we need to, a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation.
You got it.
Second.
Got a first and a second? All in favor? All right, we'll be back in a little bit.
And Cody, you can just say, so moved.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Um, the Blue Bridge. The guy.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't expect you to miss.
Don't worry about it. Um, the Blue Bridge. The original property owner died. He was married at least.
All right. Now we need a motion to adjourn the executive session and reconvene to regular meeting. So move. You got a first?
Second.
We got a second? I'll second it. All in favor? Okay, we're back in the regular meeting. There was no action during the executive session. So can we get a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Got a first and second to adjourn, all in favor? And we're done. Thank y'all.
So I get to keep all these documents?
Yeah.